All right, I show 10 after, so we're gonna go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. Are there any changes or adjustments to the agenda? If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
East Att County Schools empower all students to become productive, responsible citizens of an ever-changing global society. We'll take a minute now for public input on non-agenda items. Okay, we will go ahead and move on to secretary report.
I don't have anything tonight, the financial report will be caught up next month.
All right, then it's up to administrative reports. Becky, you wanna start?
Sure, I just reported on this article update that began back last year as our first year of our new English language arts curriculum at the K-6 level. As with any new materials, it takes time, we've had professional development, and they use an online platform where they're documenting their data, and that helps us to be able to use that then to make sure we're all integrated with the L E. So, just a piece of data that Sammy, our instructional coach, had shared, I thought I'd share with all of you about just some improvement that we've seen by just implementing the credibility, and that's part of the report there with how we've grown and the students that are on target, and reduce the students that are emergency. So, it was a celebration that we had as we continued to work through that. We're still working through professional development, so we have a training coming action tomorrow, so it's been a good thing, we've seen some good things, and continue to work. And then another big part of that is reading steps, teachers are trying to, a big part of it is developing a culture of reading, just getting kids to read and enjoying reading. And so, there's a challenge every year, and it's been, we've been working as a team to figure out how we get kids to do that, and so, one small change we made, we set a goal, we have this challenge, we have this big chart in the lunchroom, and so, we noticed that we weren't really on track, so we decided, you know, we got kids at school early, so let's get them reading, so we implemented it once a week, and boosted our steps just a bit. So, it's kinda nice in the morning, it's nice and quiet on those Wednesdays, everybody's reading, and so that's been going really well. And then I just had a little professional update there, still working, continuous working on deconstructing standards, that's ongoing, so we'll continue with that. We also spent some time in December looking at our statewide assessments, so the ISAS that's upcoming, and then teachers in K-3 too also look at screening assessments, just to put on their eyes, if they were already, that's something younger teachers that haven't been, so it's one of the expectations of those. So that was good, and there's work being to prep for our upcoming ISAS test too, so. Yeah, and then on the 15th, they had some time because it was end of the quarter, but we also continue our work, the positive work on addressing behaviors, so we've seen teachers implementing good things in their practices that are supporting, lots of good progress to build. Any questions for me?
Awesome. Advancements around your guys' reading targets, still some work to be done, that's pretty darn impressive to take from where it was where it is. Nice. I know steps are a big topic of discussion in our house, constantly.
Okay, and then for our junior, senior high, I talked a little bit about the end of the semester there, starting our new semester is kind of a crazy first week there, of course, we didn't have, I was just telling people, like, two weeks we didn't have one, we had one full day at school, I guess, so, I think for the kids, they were doing a pretty good job with it, and teachers were keeping on track for the most part, and I actually thought we had a pretty good first week, even with all that being said. I just, just today, I think all the grades and everything else that we have in there are good with incompletes and everything, I told the teachers that wanted those in today, from what I looked at, I'm gonna look at it again before I send them out, so the kids' grades, but we had 159 students on honor roll getting like a 3.0 or better, which I thought was pretty good, I mean, I'd like to see even just, even more than that, of course, you know, it's something that we can work on, but for our nine through 12, I thought those numbers are pretty good, with my seniors and sophomores having the most that we had on the honor roll there. On our professional development wise, on our workday, before they had the time for it, because it was a semester change, and so they had a good amount of time of workday there, we talked a lot about making sure that we re-hit a lot of our expectations in the classroom, when you start the second semester, you know, you wanna make sure, just like you started the year, you wanna have a good amount of those things be, re-explained with some of the kids, and especially, one of the things that I noticed is that I wanted to make sure, SMART Pass wise, have the kids show exactly when they started, go over the, like, for going through the hallways and those kind of procedures, making sure that we have a really good start to the second semester that way too, with our students. You know, they should know these things, but it's kinda, you wanna get back into a group, you gotta re-explain and go over those things, for sure. Just today, we had a, we had an assembly in our, in our day, with a group called High Performance Leadership, they came in and talked with all the grades about, this is something that, between me and Chaps Wilkie, we kinda talked about, we have a really good senior class of like, some good leaders in there, but we wanted to make sure that some of those other grades kinda got introduced to some ideas of like, what is leadership, and what's gonna happen from here, is that each grade's gonna have a certain amount of kids, kinda be chosen, but also, I'm gonna ask the teachers for some of these things when we decide who it's gonna be, to kinda work with that same group that came in today eight more times, so periodically, they're gonna be, kinda go over like, what are you doing to be leaders, or like, what are the things that we can do and implement in here for each one of you in your grades. I thought it was a pretty good talk for everybody to hear, and not just the people that are gonna be, the students that are gonna be involved with it moving forward. This, you know, with that one, one more thing, I just, I feel like, as you have the seniors graduate, you're gonna have kind of a little bit of a void anyway, so that's one of the things we wanted to target, for sure. Winter sports update, again, kinda because of the weather, we've had a lot of things, we moved around this week, it's gonna be a nice fun week because of that, but we're getting towards the end of some regular seasons, obviously, we have the game here today, which is also, they're usually at Saks, so that's kind of a, another thing, because of changes, had to even move the location, but, you know, all of our teams are doing pretty well, and I'm looking forward to see how they do there in the, as we get to districts and regionals and everything else.
Any questions? Thank you.
All right, I just have a few things to talk about tonight. First thing, unfortunately, with the tragedy in Perry, had some questions and concerns from parents to teachers, and just wanna make sure that ESAC has a safety plan in place to ensure that our students are as safe as we can, as safe as possible in here at school, so. In a little bit, that has come from our discussions here recently, would be that we do have a plan, ESAC has a approved safety plan that was created with law enforcement, and our administrators have access to that, and law enforcement has access to that, and in the event of something terrible, we have it at our fingertips and can act on it as soon as possible. I want people to know, we're in continuous communication with law enforcement, you know, with Lakeview and Sac City, we have departments in both towns, generally, they have somebody on all the time, so, and then with the sheriff's department, I've talked with Ken since this incident, we've talked about a few things too, so, we're gonna continue to evaluate that, update it as necessary, and make sure it's current, so our kids and staff are as safe as they can be when they're at school. Second thing, talking about principal applications for our assistant principal job, we received a total of 19 applications, 13 of those were probably serious applications, now we post to Iowa Works, and I'm pretty sure you can apply for a job by clicking a box, so, those other applications, about five or six of them were people that did not have the credentials for the position. But of the 13, our plan is, we are going to screen anywhere between six and eight on Wednesday evening via Zoom, and then our plan is to bring in the top three candidates for an interview next week. So, I was really happy with that number, and talking to other area principals that have hired search agencies and stuff like that, we probably got more apps than they do. Granted, the job position is quite wide for people with their skillset, but looking forward to interviewing these people and seeing how we can help our district. Teacher apps, that's a little bit different story, we have received a few, we currently have, I believe, seven jobs posted, we have received a few applicants for those seven jobs. If in the event, they close this Friday, that we don't have applicants, we will repost and continue the process going forward. Those applicants that we did receive, they've been turned over to principals, and we will interview them as we can, and we just hope that we can find good people for our district, so. I'm working on the calendars right now, I've created three different options, we're forming a calendar committee to look at those options, and I plan on bringing a version in February to the board to discuss and possibly adopt. There is a bill in legislation right now that would move the start date from August 23rd and allow you to start the Tuesday after the state fair, if that passes, that was something that we should really probably look at, just in terms of, with the current state law, August 23rd is a Friday, and every school that I'm talking to is starting the 23rd, and even with that, to get all the days in and hours in, it's kind of a mad rush to get out of here before Memorial Day, so, that would be something I would consider if that passes. And the last thing is kind of the current legislation stuff that's out there, if you did not watch the governor's State of the State address, she talked for about 20 minutes on education, talked about AEA's, talked about a teacher minimum salary, all of which, some of, some of, some of this stuff would possibly benefit a school like ours as far as the teacher salary minimum, stuff like that. The AEA stuff is a little concerning, due to the number of services that we receive from them, and individuals who work for probably two or three districts that serve and, cover a need for us, how we replace that would be interesting. But I did hear that that entire bill is being rewritten, so, basically, we will wait and see what happens, and act accordingly when laws actually get passed, so, that's what I got for this month.
Any questions, comments?
Were there any dates set, I mean, when they're gonna make sure that, is there a date they have to tell us, the laws pass as far as minimum salary and AEA decisions?
Nope.
That'll be nice.
So, we wait and see.
All right, I think next up, we've got discussion items and the playground. So you had them on the list?
Yep, so, discussion items and playground, this is probably the last time this will be a discussion item, we've had it as a discussion item for a while, and then an action item last month, and then next month, it'll go back to action. Basically, between now and our next board meeting, we gotta solidify our budget, and next meeting, we will pass an action item in regards to purchasing equipment and moving forward with the process. And with that, Julie's here, I know she's had some major advancements in the last month with some money, and so if you could just give us an update on where you're currently sitting.
So last week was a really good week, I reached out to some of the businesses in the area, some of the major businesses, and I just flat out asked them for an offer. One of the businesses responded back to me, they were like $15,000.
Wow.
And I called him up and thanked him, and for about $1,000, he returned a phone call to me again this last Tuesday, after we thanked him, we went back to the board and upped his own $25,000. That will be spread out probably over two years, so, $25,000 from that one, I got a telegram for $10,000, we didn't receive that one, did you get the check out for that? No. Definitely coming this year. I just had a call from another business, they owe $5,000, and I got a call today from another business, $25,000. I have a K-6 grant, $50,000, I still need, I also wrote a grant, $50,000, cash reserve grant, there were a team local grant, $15,000, Wellmark does not have a grant in Wellmark by grounds, they teach their focus, and now they're focusing on human security, so, it doesn't count, so, they did give me some leads on some other grants, so I'm, we're applying for a Roy Carver grant, $20,000, we're placing the funds for trying to grow the program, so, that's what I've got, I'm still waiting for your back, so, I think that takes our total fundraising up to about eighty-one thousand, one hundred and ten, and that's about the donation of some services. That's about my $25,000 from today as well. I just put that one in. Okay, so that's eighty-one thousand. I also approached a dirt excavating company, because part of this budget is for removing dirt, removing equipment, so I reached out to one of our local companies and asked them if we paid for the fuel for the machines, we paid for the dirt that had to be hauled in, if they would donate their services in exchange for a tax deduction, equal to what their services would cost, and they seemed interested, so that could potentially save us $1,000. So, I almost forgot to read where I needed to be for this project, without the other grants that's been given.
Awesome, so, so, again, thank you so much, Julie, for all your work on this. Prior to the next meeting, Julie and I will sit down with our numbers, and then we will bring a solid number to the board next meeting to seek approval for, so.
Were they going to, I don't know, one time we had talked about the baseball field money we donated to this project, is that still intact, or is that not?
Consideration, yep, that'll be consideration on the school side of our portion, so.
As I find grants, I'll keep applying for them, and Farm Bureau reached out to me, they would like to work with the 4H Club, and make some catches, to put one in front of the elementary school, one on the playground of the elementary school, they'd like to work with one of our local, they'd like to work with Phil mattress, and he would build it for us, they would have the 4H logo on, and a Farm Bureau logo on it, as a combination, they'd be made out of metal and powder wood, so that's something we should consider, have to move forward with this one here on the 4H Club.
I'm fine with it, once the rest of the board.
Before they do any of it, I'll show them guys pictures to be approved.
Perfect.
Yeah.
If they can have you a nice community service project to get some of it, and we can help.
Okay.
And we're also working in Dallas, we're also working on these.
Our, some of the grants that you've submitted, like, what's the timeframe for finding out?
Like, Casey's grant, they won't announce until April.
Okay, so, oh, ways out on some.
Some, April or May, like the Carver style one, the Roy Carver one, I'm not sure when that one is, Bank Midwest also has a grant, they're supposed to come to it till May, but they decided in July, and I'm pretty sure we'll be in the strong run for some of that one, also contacted Nutrien, they also have a grant, you have to return sites within the district, so we're working on, so we can see if we can succeed, so we can come out. So I felt pretty positive that I could come up with that, we may do much of that.
Awesome.
Otherwise, I'll find something else to go after.
We appreciate all the hours and the work.
Yes, we do.
Very much so.
And we're a personal challenge.
All right, so we'll move that to action items next month, and with that, we'll move on to action items, so first up is the consent agenda, I'm not sure if there's any questions on the minutes, the bills, or the policies.
Well, the comment would be, it's semester time again, so, your general fund bills were about half to a third, or half to two-thirds of tuition.
If there are no questions on the consent agenda, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
Okay, motion in a second to approve the consent agenda items, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And next up, we've got a final resolution for the sale of the baseball field.
Right, so, last fall, we had our public hearing and approved sale of this, the group that bought it wanted to create an LLC, and they finally, they've got that done, and they have a name now, and our attorney has redone the documents for us, so all I need is a motion to finalize this, would be a motion to approve the resolution authorizing conveyance of the property and deed without warranty, and one motion can approve them both.
Any questions, comments for John on that, or discussion?
No.
I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the final resolution of sale of the baseball field.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second to approve the final resolution for the sale of the baseball field, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up are, is the approval of our budget meeting dates.
All right, so these are the documents I set in front of you before the meeting tonight. The budget process is new, and I have set these for you, Dale, when we're done, so, we have to have two public hearings, and then approval of the budget after those two hearings. By March 15th, we have to have entered onto the Department of Management website, the maximum property tax that we would consider approving, and then by, or on March 25th or after, we'd have our first public hearing, and on prior to April 30th, we'd have to have the second one and approval of the budget. So, we went to a workshop on Friday, I put together a proposed timeline for East Att County, our regular meeting in February is the 19th, by then, the three of us should be able to have a budget proposal for you guys to look at, and question, you know, give us any questions or recommendations, that's plenty early. After that, we would get our notices to the paper, and the stuff entered in the Department of Management website, so, if we would move our March meeting back a week, that would be March 25th, we could have our public hearing, close the public hearing, have our regular meeting, and act on any recommendations from that public hearing to kinda start to get to our final product. Then, later that week, we'd get our notices to the newspaper for the second public hearing, and we could have that on April 15th, which is our normal meeting date, and once again, we'd have a public hearing, close it, and have our regular meeting, and approve the budget. Gives us two weeks lead time, in case something goes wrong and we get behind someplace, we have a chance to get back to some publications and go again, so, that's what I'd like us to consider. If you look this over, I know you didn't get it at a time, we apologize, but we just kinda put it together Friday at our workshop, so, the next page is just a calendar with some notes from a school finance company, we went to it, and then the third page are the levies that we think you're gonna see in February for recommendations, they, I don't think they're gonna change, but if you see anything there you don't like, let me know, for sure, they're very similar to last year. Cash reserve levy for SBRC, that's what we approved in November, for English language learners open enrolled out and new students, so that's 158 this year, down just a little bit. Special ed deficit, we talked about that in November or December, and it's 306,000. Management fund levy, no change, capital levy, no change, instructional support levy, no change, and then the last item on there is just fully fund the at-risk program that we approved in December, so, valuation's up, so even, everything you see on here preliminarily shows 20 or 30 cent decrease in rate, but dollars are still up, I'm gonna say a quarter million dollars, maybe, most of that, I think, I hate to speak, because I don't remember, but a lot of that was in capital because of the valuation increase, so. Real preliminary, but that's where we're at, and that's our plan, so if you come away with questions, give us a call, or if you have any knowledge, fine, but, trying to hit the ball well.
I do have one addition to kind of this timeline, so with this timeline, we can take care of all the budget stuff as needed, my addition would be in regards to teacher contracts, if we are able to settle on negotiations, prior to March 15th, we would look at having a special meeting the week of March 11th to approve teacher contracts, just so we can get those out on the 15th, that's the first legal date that we can do that, so, not set in stone yet, but that is a possibility.
We've discussed moving our regular meeting to the 11th, given the calendar, probably wouldn't have our bills ready, so.
Okay, I won't be here on the 19th, I don't, that's, I mean.
Which one?
On February 19th.
Okay, it's pretty flexible for me, we can go either way, so.
I'm up that hole.
I'm just out part of the week though.
I would say that month is the one thing on there that we could probably be flexible about, so, we can talk about that at the end here.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Do we need any sort of approval on this, or are we just?
I don't think so, no, I don't, it could've been discussion, just didn't get it up.
Okay, that's fine, just wanted to make sure, so look at dates and let John know if there's any conflicts, I think. All right, next up, approval of early graduates.
Tony, I don't know if there's any you wanna speak to on this, but there are three names in your board packet that are seeking graduation at the end of the first semester.
Right, and I have the list here with me, because I'm not on there right now, but I know one of them is from, like, still here in the 712 building, and the other two from the Flex Ed Center, getting theirs done too, so, I don't have anything else to add really with them, but.
One question, do we need to approve these pending successful completion, or just approve?
The only one is Seth Maan.
So, we can just do them all pending successful grad completion.
Any other discussion on that? Or is that entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the three early graduates pending they meet their qualifications.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the early graduates, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is personnel items, I think we have a couple of resignations and contracts, I believe.
Yes, we do, three resignations in total, the resignation from Dave Gustalem, he is our title teacher who will be retiring at the end of this year, Haley Item, kindergarten teacher, she submitted her resignation, she plans on moving out of the state, and then Mary Yanda, high school math, also plans on retiring slash moving up to Minnesota, so, those are the three resignations we have at this time. Contract offers, Brandon Shimmer, he is an associate up at the elementary, and Cassandra Brannon, an associate up at the elementary.
We have to approve the personnel items as presented.
Motion in a second to approve the personnel items as presented, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are to board reports, communications, and future agenda items, I think the first thing is probably meeting date, since we have two with a conflict on the 19th. Is it worth to go a week later? There's an option, the 26th.
We do have conferences, but I can, it's getting much different on that, that's fine, so, I don't know if it's a conflict for anybody else, but.
I didn't have that on my schedule yet. Are we, are you?
My kids.
Well, I know, for conferences, but I meant the day. Well, I know for conferences, but I meant the day. You're good, are we all in consensus that works?
Yep, February twenty-sixth.
Move it back a week, John, if I was.
Yep.
Okay.
Give me more time for the budget.
That's right.
That's all right.
Okay, so we'll go the twenty-sixth at six-ten in this building. Are there any other agenda items anybody wants to put on there?
Well, I wanna, I don't know if it's an agenda, it could be an agenda item, but, um, I wanna talk a little bit about our school security. I've had conversations with the sheriff and a little bit of the chief of police in Lakeview. I think we should really strongly consider put an SRO officer in the high school building. Through my law enforcement contacts, you know, the incident in Perry lasted four minutes, all that was done in just four minutes. And unfortunately, their SRO officer was at the elementary at the time. Um, in my experience, um, training is very big, and two, the quickest law enforcement can have contact with the person, the safest, you know, the safer people are. So, um, I know Lakeview PD is interested in maybe supplying SRO officers, so, and that was just through text message, so. So I, I think it's something we should consider, you know, I, I don't know what, if Lakeview's interested in. I know it'd be a benefit for them because they're busier in the summer, and then they're not in the winter during the school year, so I think it could benefit the city of Lakeview and, you know, our school system, so. I think it's just something we should consider and evaluate.
There is some, yes.
Uh, safety, um.
School resource.
School resource officers.
School resource office, yes.
Anything else for future topics?
We'll have the playground as an action item, we'll have the budget as an action item.
If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Get out of the sauna. It is, the heat is working in here, let's say that.
Jackie, I've got all these printed, if we find her.
Yes, let's try and find her. You want to?
Get these signed, and then she can.
Yeah.
We need to take this and stuff back.
Let me shut this off.
Well, that's why training, there should be training. I know they had certain teachers around the building.